Thank you and welcome everyone for Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight, Wednesday, September 28, 2022. It is 6:35 PM and we are at room 320 at the multi-service center in town of Wareham. I'm going to call the meeting to order. My far left, Mr. Richard Sample, Jake Morrison, my far right associate member Troy Larson, our clerk Jim Akabachi, myself, the Chair Nazir Alkolase. Some meetings we have to do quick on our preliminary business, meeting 9:14, 2022.
I have received these via email. I have reviewed them unless anybody else has reviewed them and found any errors that I didn't spot, they look fine to me. I motion that we approve the meeting minutes from 9:14, 2022.
Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Aye, second.
Second by Rich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. 5:00. Okay, before we go forward, quick, Mr. Perry, you want to continue?
I do.
And which one is yours?
Attorney for Judge Stuart DiOle. We agree with the board that it makes sense for him to do a full site plan review in order to fully get approved what he needs to do or would like to do there.
All right.
So we've hired John Churchill to do the plans. He's looking for at least four weeks to get them. I asked for a six-week continuance.
Second meeting in November?
October 12.
I'd say the second meeting in November would be better.
It won't be a first meeting. I'm here October 12th. You want to try October 12th first, just in case?
That's October 12th, fine. Yeah, October 12th is good.
All right.
We'll shoot for if we have to continue again.
I'll let you know. The only reason I would have to is if John hasn't got everything completed by then.
And that would be November, what, 12?
12, Nazir said.
October.
No, no, November.
November.
We want to skip October.
I can't be ready by November 12.
Skip October.
I mean, October 12.
November 9.
November 9. What about the second meeting in November?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, that sounds safer. That's just a hair over six weeks away.
That's the 23rd.
We went to the second meeting.
23rd?
Yeah, for the record, Veronica Devenese, our regular member showed in at 6:37 PM. All right, so for the 29-22, for Mr. DiOleem, represented by Attorney Perry, and it's 2618 Cranberry Highway, can we have a motion to continue until November 23?
23, 2022, so moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Second by Rich. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. So, see you then.
Thank you very much.
Anybody wants to?
That's the 22nd?
23rd.
The 23rd.
That's what I thought you said.
Anyone else want to continue?
Number two here, Dos Amigos, is looking for October 12th.
Okay, on Dos Amigos, it is 26-22.
Motion to continue.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain. So we'll continue this until October 12th, Dos Amigos, and that is true. What's that? Just give us a minute, guys.
None of my firsts.
Is Damian Pantry, Damian Pantry wants to continue as well?
Yes.
Apparently, okay.
And I move October 12th.
Okay, a motion to continue, 30-12, Damian's pantry on 242 Marion Road. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. So that's continued until October 12th as well. We go back to our regular order of business. Notice of project of change, Chapter 40B, 815 Main Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. For the record, Peter Freeman, representing the applicant. And you will recall that at the hearing, which is also scheduled tonight, on the adjacent project at 815 Main Street with the same developer principal, John Scanlon, we had discussed and shown that there are 14 spaces for the 815 Main Street development that are going to be on the edge of the 801 Main Street that's already built and successful, and it's just a little past the entrance. So what I suggested, and that's what I followed through on, is that it was within the 40B regulations that allow a board to determine that changes are insubstantial, and that's why we're here. So the notice of project change, I think it's pretty straightforward. I'm not going to read it, but we submitted both an overlay plan with my letter that showed the existing 815 project and the overlay of where the parking and some drainage infrastructure will be that will benefit really both projects. And that's, in essence, what we're here for. So we have Mr. Scanlon here and also Rick Tabazinski, if you would like him to explain the plans. I do think it's pretty straightforward. And in the regulations, which you probably dealt with before, the examples, and they're not bright yellow lines, but the examples of types of changes that are typically substantial are related to increase in units, increase in the number of bedrooms, increase in the size of units, or the footprint, or something that has some, you know, greater impact on a development. So something like this is not typically considered to be anything more than an insubstantial change, and that's what we're hoping you would determine tonight, and it would be as simple as that. So I can have, as I said, Rick explain the plans or just see a few of questions.
So you want to modify 815 Main Street?
Yes.
801, we're not.
We're not doing 801 yet. We're doing 815, and it wouldn't take a change in the comprehensive permit because the only relevant condition is one that I think I pointed out that says that if there are change in any, you know, site plans, and it didn't specify before or after construction, but it said simply, you know, notify the ZBA and follow this process. So that's what we're doing, and if they're approved, the two things, if it's approved, then we've taken care of any concern about the existing 801 Main Street. And then with that approval in hand, you would be able to address it and presumably would be okay with it on the 815 hearing, but obviously you have to deal with that as a separate matter.
Okay. All right, let's hear it then. Do you guys want, do you have a question before we hear, do you have an attorney, do you have someone?
Yeah, Rick, our engineer. Rick is here.
Engineer?
Can explain it. Do you want Rick to come up?
Charlie, I see response from you for 801. Do you have anything on 815?
No, although there is a related thing, which is I went through the latest plan and the drainage calculations for this that you might want to take into consideration. The drainage calculations have been done for the 25-year storm for a portion of the new project because they are carrying that runoff from that new project over into the parking spaces of the existing 40B, adding four leaching pits along with the catch basin. The calculations seem to indicate that the system, the way it's designed, will handle the 25-year storm, but stormwater calculations say that you should not adversely affect adjacent property with a 100-year storm. And I don't have the calculations to show that if that system that they've designed is overtopped, it will not adversely impact the existing site. So I guess we need to resolve that, and that would be something that Mr. Tabazinski could either respond to tonight or preferably get the added calculations so that we'll know for sure.
Right, that was my most concern in the beginning, that they use in part of the projects. All right, so any board questions before Mr. Kuzansky could, is that Mr. Kuzansky?
Kapazinski, yes.
Kapazinski, start. Anything for the board? All right, so can we hear it, please?
Sure. The overlay plan that we prepared, basically just from the as-bits that were completed for the 815 Main Street show the entire site here. And this little corner area is where we're talking about adding some parking spaces to serve the 801 property right here in the corner. So we've shown basically just the 14 parking spaces that run off of the main drive. We wouldn't be changing the main driveway at all. We're just building parking spaces off of it. We wouldn't be affecting any other utilities or any other systems for this site. And then we have proposed a catch basin and some leaching pits in the lower corner of this new parking area on this 815 Main Street site. And those would handle actually a portion, half of the driveway of the 815 site would be handled by these new catch basins. So in effect, it's actually improving things on 815 by taking care of a portion of the driveway that normally would go to their regular drainage system back in here. The driveway slopes all the way down from Main Street all the way to a low point that I believe is right here, and then goes into a four bay and some drainage systems into a basin in the back. So these, this catch basin and these leach pits would handle a portion of that driveway that actually presently is going to the existing drainage system. It's just, and the reason for that is it's just the way things are graded. This roadway is crowned, so a portion of it is draining in this direction. Since we're adding pavement in that area, we're collecting it, and it's just getting caught by that catch basin there. So that's the reason why there's additional pits that are needed because it's not only handling the 801 Village site, but a portion of the driveway here, so. But beyond that, we're, there's no other changes to this site. There's some trees and a fence, I believe, along here that's going to have to be removed for the pavement and the extension beyond the property line. But that's really it. Like the attorney, Mr. Freeman, had said, it's pretty insubstantial when you look at the rest of the site.
Can you speak to what Mr. Rowley said about the 100-year calculation for this?
Yeah, I mean, we had run the 25-year calculations because I believe we looked at your subdivision regulations, which called for 25-year storm for piping systems and everything in your subdivision regs. But essentially, it's caught by a low point here, and there's going to be four bleach pits in a row. And again, I think because of the fact that we're removing a portion that's actually draining down to the other basin back here, we're going to have more capacity in the rear of the site than there is now. So if this does happen to under 100-year, back up a little bit, and some of it flows down towards this low point here, it's already designed to handle it. So that's kind of our theory in that regard is that we're accommodating a portion of the driveway already, and if there's any excess from a 100-year storm, it would overflow this catch basin and flow down to where it's going to now.
Well, I guess the numbers would speak for themselves. Theory, I don't think, you're going to have to have the numbers for Mr. Rowley to review the calculation.
No, we didn't do the 100-year calculations. We just didn't do it.
So we can't act on it if we don't have the calculation.
Let me, if I may, Mr. Chairman, because I understand that, and that's okay, although we could come back on this notice of project change, but my thinking is this, would you be okay with approving it, which would really be making the determination that the change is insubstantial, but put in your notice or approval, simply say, subject to approval of the stormwater drainage plans for the adjacent 801? Because we're not going to be doing anything on 815 unless we get approved on 801, and that would still give you and Mr. Rowley full opportunity to review the more detailed calculations that you're looking for. So it would just kind of button this up and would save you folks' time and us' time, and I think that, you know, that doesn't leave any cracks that, you know, that would cause a problem.
I run it by the board and see what they think. And the plan you have there, that's September 1st, right?
If I could also just add to that, if we run the calculations and we have to add another pit.
If I may, is your plans dated September 1st?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm looking the right plans.
So if we run up in the, when we do run the calculations and we have to add another leach pit, that's still, again, an insubstantial change. From our opinion, it's not affecting anything out here other than making the stormwater system a little bit better in the back because we're adding a pit over here. So there's, again, it seems to be rather insubstantial, whether or not there's four pits, five pits.
Like I said, I run it by the board. Personally, I don't have a problem. If you need to add a few pits, you just add them. Before I go forward, anyone in the public want to speak for that modification, for the modification for 815 only? Okay, I hear no one. Troy, what do you think? You okay with it?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
And you think it's minor?
Yes.
Okay, Veronica?
Based on what I'm seeing, I don't think I sat on this on the 10th, so, but what I'm seeing is minor.
So this is the one that you?
You were here on the 14th. That was last time. Let me see that.
We're not doing 801. We're doing 815.
815.
This is the, this is the big project that's existing. It's been there for a year or so.
I'm sorry, 801, you had four members, right? You need three out of four.
We need three. I can't remember if we only had four to tell you the truth.
That's right, so that's 815.
It seems minor, but I don't recall.
No, you weren't here for that. That's true. Jimmy?
No, I have no objections, as long as, like you said, we'll condition it just the way you said it, yeah.
Okay. And Rich?
No comments at this time.
No comments? Jake?
I have no problem with this.
Charlie, so that'll be satisfactory if they study and they need a few more basins and stuff?
I want to confirm one more thing too as well, that this is subject to TSS removal regulations as the stormwater regulations call for. It may be true that the subdivision rules of regulations say that the drainage system has to be designed for 25 years, but I believe that stormwater calculations have to be shown and that you typically take those standards for stormwater and check them off, that it's either compliant with it or it's not subject to it. So I would add that as a condition if the board sees fit.
Sure. Is that okay, Counselor?
I don't object to the substance, but it seems to me it's simpler and still protects what you're concerned about understandably if we simply leave it as I said, because you can put that condition on the approval for 815.
I understand that, and I just wanted to put that out as an additional comment that...
Right, so I think we'll all remember that when we get, knock on wood, to a favorable decision on 815, we'll put that as part of the condition, what Mr. Rowley just said, as part of the condition on 815, and just keep this determination and insubstantial simple saying, subject to the approval and any conditions related to stormwater for 815.
Okay, so let's see if we get a favorable motion, and Mr. Charlie will put his condition, and we go from there. How's that?
One question before we make any motion. My question is, we're taking, in essence, we're taking a few package bases from 815 and lending them to 801.
No, no, we're not reducing the number of parking spaces at all on 815. We're adding.
You're adding?
Right.
So 815 currently has, and you're going to add more spaces, but they're going to be at 815, but they're going to serve 801?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I was, I was...
Sorry about that, yeah.
No, that's all right. That's why I asked.
Absolutely.
Then that said, then I have, do we need to, do we need to vote on this or just acknowledge the project change?
Well, you should vote that you approve the changes as per my letter as insubstantial, subject to the approval, I can write it out if you want and email it tomorrow, but subject to the approval and conditions related to stormwater in the adjacent 815 40B application.
I'll make that in the form of a motion if you'll write it and email it to Sonia.
Okay. Any discussion in that motion? We got to add Mr. Rowley's conditions.
Yeah, I think he did. He's got it in there.
Charlie, was okay what he said?
Yeah.
Okay, very well. That's motion by Jim. Do I have a second on that?
I'm second.
Second by Jake. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Sonia, I hope you get all that. Okay, so that first part is done. I think the first hearing, you were here August 10th. That's when Veronica wasn't here. I didn't have my book. There was Troy, Jake, Richard, and myself.
We got a VIP that entered the room for the record.
Yeah, Mr. Ken Buckland, our VIP. And it is 6:50 PM. Our first hearing was August 10th, right, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay. And there were Troy, there was Mr. Larson, Akabachi, myself, and Mr. Sample. All right, Nazir and Jim. Okay, so that's done, that's done. Before we go forward, we need to go on a bond, just, you have Woodland Cove as well, right?
Yes, that's lucky you, you have me three times tonight.
Two, three, in a row.
In a row, and I'm lucky that I'm in a row early, thank you. So yeah, John, you can sit back there for a moment, and Mark Pilot from Dakota is here for the bond.
And we have the setting bond amount for Woodland Cove.
John, we didn't play any music, so you don't have to worry about losing your chair.
I'll just introduce it formally again. Peter Freeman, representing the applicant, Dakota, and Mark Pilot is here. So I think you remember the history. Basically, at this point, we need to have the bond in place. The form of bond, I believe, was reviewed by Town Council. I know that there was email back and forth with Ken Buckland. So there was a second form that was a little lengthier that was submitted. I believe that that's been okayed, but I don't want to say that definitively. I don't know if Ken's on Zoom, but that is more technical in a way.
He's going to bite you.
Oh, I didn't even see you. You snuck in behind the, okay, so you...
He is on Zoom. He zoomed in.
Yeah, well, I obviously didn't zoom in on him completely. You're hiding behind the, yeah, he's very quiet usually, you know, anyway. So you can tell me if I'm right in a second, but the big thing, as you recall, with some, you know, helpful commentary from Mr. Rowley, et cetera, was the amount. And so the amount has gone back and forth, as I understand it. Now it is, what is it, proposal mark?
It's at 403-971.25.
So it's a substantial number, and I would just say, might as well ask Ken if I'm right about the form of the bond, and then, you know, any explanations that you want about the amount, which we certainly think is a fair amount. So if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, you can ask Ken and then ask Mr. Rowley, I guess, what he thinks about the amount, and Ken too, on the amount.
Right, I'll start by Mr. Rowley. I read his comment on, what happened to this? So Charlie, you said, "It seems to be reasonable, but subject area covered by the estimate." But the list is not complete if the subject area covered by the estimate is expanded. So is it okay or...
Let me explain that a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I received not only the bond list with the breakdown, but also a sketch plan that was done. Incidentally, the bond estimate was done by BSC, their site engineer.
Yep.
In addition to that, they submitted a copy of the plan. And the way that the special permit reads, it says that the access for Phase 2 shall be secured by a bond, and I'm just paraphrasing that, I'm not repeating it word for word. But when they prepared the plan, they prepared the plan and did the cost estimate based on simply the driving aisles of the roadway that's in front of the Phase 2 buildings, leaving out that portion of the paving which deals with the parking spaces, the lighting, and whatever other details, including a catch basin and a manhole, sewer manhole, I believe it was, and some pipe that's within that framework of construction. So I need a clarification from you, especially the board, as to what your intention was when you set that up. Was it simply for the driving aisles, which is two 12-foot lanes? Or should it include the rest of the paving for the parking spaces that deal with Phase 2? And the same thing for Phase 3, they did. It was only a short section of asphalt that was being repaved at an inch and a half, but the plan says that that base course of mix is going to be taken out and then replaced. So there's no carrying of material for that. So I need a clarification of what the intent was of the board. If the board's intent was just for the driving aisles, then I think I'm comfortable with the numbers. But if it wasn't the intent, if it was to include all of the paving that's for Phase 2, then the plan right now does not cover it.
I can't give you, that's been a while, and I don't think any of the members remember that, unless Mr. Buckland's up to date with that. I know, has anybody remembered that?
We're giving them, he's giving us a $403,000 bond, something like that?
That is correct.
That is correct.
And that's during Phase, during the first phase?
Yes.
It's for Phase 2.
They'll be coming back in future phases, and that will include additional paving?
This right here, this is for Phase 2 and Phase 3.
2 and 3.
2 and 3 is for the 403.
If we don't get the bond here, we don't get it. There is no Phase 4, correct?
There is no Phase 4.
There's Phase 1. There's no Phase 1.
Is Phase 1 done yet?
No.
Phase 1, the...
Will you be coming back to us for Phase 1?
I believe that Phase 1 is done. It's in place out there.
No, you did it backwards.
That's why I'm, that's...
The numbering was backward. The whole numbering sequence we went through last time on this, it's, I guess, very confused.
I think you started 3 to 1.
What I'm trying to say is... Well, we started with number 1 because if you recall, we had come back here twice to change the phasing of the project. So Phase 1 is the access off of Redbrook. It goes to the clubhouse. It continues past Phase 3, which is a single building, okay, which we'll pave and do all that, and then it hits the back part of the project.
And you're supposed to do a temporary cul-de-sac.
A cul-de-sac at the end. That's absolutely correct. So that's done. Now, the Phase 2 will be on the other side, on the left-hand side where the motel is, coming off of Redbrook and feeding in, not, off of Cranberry, sorry, feeding in off the left-hand side for those two buildings. Phase 3 is the one I bypassed by the clubhouse, is a single building right there on the right-hand side.
My point was that we got another, we got another chance to take a swipe at them. If this is adequate, if the driving aisles are adequate now, it's a significant bond, and, you know, if they come back after us for another phase and they've disappointed us here, we can spank them in the future.
That's true. Kenny, you want to?
The first time.
Yeah, well, you understand what I'm saying. I mean, I'll try to keep the bonds as reasonable as possible because you're going to come back at us, and by then this work will be done, so maybe this bond can, that's, you know, just shifting money from phase to phase is what I'm...
Let me see if Kenny is, are you up to date to this?
Yeah, the reason for the bond was because if one of the phases was not completed, then the driveway would be whole, and there would be a driveway looped around the total property. So the bond was to construct the driveway, the lanes, so that you get access. It wouldn't necessarily mean the parking because that was to the development, it wouldn't occur at the time when the driveway had to be constructed. But the details in the description and the decision says paving, landscaping, and other details. So it's up to you to determine what's appropriate in this, in the list of elements in the bond.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, and I agree with that. What I would say, though, is on the language, I think it was a little vague. I mean, it does say access drives. I can't say that I, even though I was here, I don't remember discussion on it. I certainly can't say I know what was exactly in your state of mind, but I think in terms of handling it now, it's not unreasonable to do what we're proposing for multiple reasons, including the fact, as Ken just said, the main motivation for having the requirement was the phasing and not being sure if all of it would get built. Well, it's all under construction now, and even though that doesn't guarantee, you know, that it'll all be finished, but the likelihood is that it will be. There are kinds of requirements for the lenders and all of that, and investors. And so I think what you said initially, Mr. Chairman, or I'm sorry, what your vice chairman, Jim, said, is that, you know, it's a substantial amount, and, you know, especially with all of the phases having been started, I don't think the likelihood of, you know, the town being stuck with anything is likely, much less likely, than when you put that condition in several years ago.
I agree. Troy, what do you think?
I agree.
Veronica?
I agree.
Rich?
I agree.
Jake?
I agree as well.
Anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against? I hear none, so what's the wishes?
Make a motion to set the bond at 403, whatever the number was. Could you repeat the number for me, please? Could you repeat the number for me, please?
Good thing. 403,971, and 25 cents.
So, to accept that bond, the motion, right?
We need that quarter, don't we?
Absolutely. The only thing I would request, sorry to interrupt, there are, we have two forms of the bond here. Whatever one you guys chose or prefer to have, I have no problem either way.
That's on the selectmen, that'd be for the town.
Well, no, it's not for the selectmen, because it's part of the ZBA. I discussed that with Ken via email.
It's for the town.
No, but it's, what I was gonna say is it's a distinction without a difference in that we understand that, you know, normally, town council reviews it, which is what I referred to. I don't know if there has been feedback from town council. I assume that the second form was because there had been response, but I may be wrong, Ken. But, we're okay with having it, having the form being approved by Ken and consultation with town council. But, I just want to clear that we do not, we don't need to go to the Board of Selectmen.
As a board, we'll take either one, whichever one...
Town council and Ken agrees to. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So, my motion stands.
Motion by Jim to accept the bond amount and the two different forms, whatever's accepted by our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland, and town councillor, Mr. Richard Bowen. Do I have second on that?
I'll second that.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. Rich is abstain?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we got...
410.
401.
401, sorry. Okay, so that carries.
Okay, thank you.
But you're, you're not retreating, you're still here, aren't you, Freeman?
All right, Sonia, make sure, Rich abstain on that motion for the bond, okay?
Down, or... Didn't we have you on 2522-801?
All right. What, what, what was the name of the lady she did the minutes, she don't come here no more?
She's on Zoom, I believe, tonight, because it's...
Oh, okay. She's on Zoom, she watches on then.
What's her name?
Patty.
Patty. Okay, Patty, just make sure, please, on that last motion, 401, Mr. Rich Sample abstain, thank you. All right, continue public hearing, 25-22, Villages, 801 Main Street, LLC.
All right, it's still me, for the record. Peter Freeman, attorney for the applicant. And we have, again, Rick Tabazinski here, and John Scanlon. And our architect couldn't be here, but Nanette Perkins, working with John, will explain the very brief changes, or small changes, on the plans, all in response to what you had requested at the last hearing. So, just so we're all on the same page, what we have done since the last hearing, and I've submitted these things, there are revisions to the site plans, which I think are largely in response to Mr. Rowley's peer review letter. We also submitted, for the record, for this case, the notice of project change that you just dealt with for 801. And we also submitted those revised modular building plans. And then, from Mr. Tabazinski, Atlantic Design Engineering, again, he submitted a several-page letter in response to Mr. Rowley's several-page letters of peer review comments. Rick also submitted a letter addressing the water department's comments. And he also submitted a stormwater, I think it's called drainage report. And the only other thing, I believe, that we submitted, and I'll just repeat, because these should be stated for the record at the hearing. So, there had been a question of some other provisions that we hadn't listed in our waivers that came up. So, listing them, as I did in an email submission earlier this, actually, last week, last Friday, the question of zoning bylaw, Section 340.0, which had been mentioned as possibly requiring a minimum of 650 square feet. It actually isn't a requirement. It basically is a definition related to buildings that have five or more dwelling units in them. In that case, if you were using a zoning provision for five or more buildings, residential, for a residential building with five or more dwellings, there would have to be a minimum of 650 square feet. But, since we have buildings that don't have five units, then it's simply not applicable.
What section of the bylaw, sir?
Unless I had a typo, it was Section 340.0.
340?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then the...
I'm aware of that, but that's good to know.
Then, the second one, and this is based on, and he can elaborate, Rick's conversation with the Board of Health agent, Patrick McDonald. The requirement that had been discussed by you folks last time through the Board of Health, a requirement for the septic design calculations to add an extra bedroom, that's actually an old regulation, which Mr. McDonald said is no longer in effect. And then, the third one, does have impact, but our answer is positive. You folks had raised the question of another Board of Health regulation on water quality, Section 8, about whether the septic system or project itself is within 500 feet of a water body or surface water body. And it turns out that we are, I think it's marginally, but we acknowledge that it probably is. And so, we are going to change the proposed septic to a denitrification system. So, those are our important matters. I think that takes care of the, if you will, technical, legal code types of, or regulation types of things within the town bylaws. So, hopefully, that will satisfy you. Then, in terms of the changes, the simplest would be the building changes. So, Sonia, I don't know if you can project, or if you have a board with them. Nanette, it's your time in the limelight, if you want to just put up the boards.
Good evening.
If you're gonna put them up on the board, I can... Are you gonna be on the screen? Okay, then you can use your microphone.
Sonia hands them.
You can pull up the microphone and make sure they hear.
Hi, Nanette Perkins. I'm with this project, representing the architect. We did send over the documents earlier, the presentation, and Sonia did say that that was all set. So, can Sonia hear us?
So, you sent us a digital copy, but we have no hard copy?
No, you actually do have a hard copy as well. I made them, just in case.
Yep.
I got an email, hoping you would.
Okay, good.
Want me to hand these in? Which ones do you want to send?
Sure, I just wanted to make sure.
Just, yeah, you're right, councillor, that's Section 340.4, that 650. Five or more family dwelling, I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Sure, sure, okay.
10 of these, and 10 of these, so...
These are all the same?
No, they're different, they're all different.
Well, which ones, because I want to hand them out to everybody, so...
Yeah, there are 10 copies of each of these. I don't understand the...
Yeah, you do, because there's different sets. So, while Nanette is passing them out, I think the changes are simply, there was erroneously a chimney on one or more of the buildings. These are the modular buildings, and there, you know, there is no chimney. I think the other items that are new are not so much changes, but simply clarifications or more detail on what types of materials.
Okay. Well, I guess at this moment, it's simply more technical than, it's more like of Mr. Rowley's decision. I see all the comments from the engineer and the response from Mr. Rowley.
I certainly agree. And I was gonna suggest, after, you know, having now officially submitted, not just by email, those plans, you know, if you have any questions at any time about the plans, naturally, we can answer them. But, I agree, I think those are pretty straightforward, and now, those would be the building plans of record. And I agree, Mr. Chairman, that whichever, whichever way you would like to go now, whether you would like Mr. Rowley to respond to our engineer's response letter, or have Rick go through it as succinctly as he can, and, you know, also show the plans that have been revised. But, that's where we're at at this point, is to, you know, our goal is to satisfy you, which we know means satisfying Mr. Rowley. And I do think, which is an overgeneralization, but I do think that Rick feels as though he has addressed and made changes that satisfy what Mr. Rowley's been talking about. But, I don't state that as Mr. Rowley's conclusion. It's just that, you know, I feel positive about where we're at. So, again, we could have Rick go through what he explained in his letter, or just turn to Mr. Rowley, you know, which might cut to the chase in terms of what may be still any issues outstanding.
Well, I see Mr. Tabazinski, Richard. So, there was a question asked, then he answered himself all along. I just want to hear from Charlie. Charlie, do you have a chance to go through these questions and answers?
I have not had a chance to go through the questions and answers. I did review the plan.
Okay.
And I know that some of the things that were in my original review have been taken care of. Looking quickly at the grading.
The original review on August 10, you mean, the very first one? Not when you did it on August 10 in your letter?
You submitted a letter on August 10, is that what we're referring to?
Yes.
There's been no subs, there's been no letter since?
Yes, I think there is, and I think that what is in the comments that Atlantic Design has done here.
Okay.
If you want to go through them one by one, I can do that.
Sure.
The first page on the comments there, they're apparently dealing with the fire department on that, so there should be nothing for me to say about it until you get a letter from the fire department saying that they're satisfied with the fire location, et cetera.
One second, Charlie, is the response to water department or the response to consulting engineer, which one?
Well, it would be from the water department, basically, to you.
Okay.
Just so, no pun intended, we're on the same page. There was Mr. Rowley's August 10 letter. There was the water department's letter of August 11. I don't believe there's been any other letter.
I see that one hidden at the end of 6-inch line, okay. All right, let's go one by one.
All right. With respect to the backflow devices and so forth, again, that's all water system. This is on Page 2 of the Atlantic letter, which is dated September 23.
Yeah.
Page 2 is all water system, again. Page 3 is water system. Page 4 is water system. So, I don't see anything in that particular response that has to do with my letter. It has all to do with the water department.
Right, and the fees and so forth, and the connection development fees.
So, with respect to my letter, this letter is dated also September 3rd. I did have a comment on the parking spaces being 9 by 18.
And which page is that on the answer?
These will be the spaces that were being provided on the adjacent property.
Your answer, which page, sir?
And said, "It's unclear why three spaces are provided for the existing dwelling, when a total of 16 would meet a requirement of two spaces per unit." If you look at the plans, right at the beginning of it, for the existing buildings, there were multiple spaces that were added there. And it didn't make any sense to have those additional spaces. I was wondering, apparently, additional spaces were provided for the convenience of tenants. So, you've got more spaces than are necessary according to the regulation. That's all I'm saying.
Is that...
I don't see that as a bad thing.
Okay.
Other than, unless somebody's worried about impervious services.
Unless we make them 10 by 20, the regular size?
Well, 9 and 1/2 by 18, 9 and 1/2 by 19 is the typical space that's required in the zoning bylaw.
So, they're asking for a waiver, 9 by 18 versus 19?
Yes, it would be.
Six inches in width and a foot in length.
No, the 9 is allowed by the town regulation, but the 18 is not.
I think 9 and 1/2 by 19 is the standard space.
Ah, okay, 9 and 1/2 by 19, I get you.
Right.
So, you want to waive a council on that?
Yes.
My response was, if you made them 9 and 1/2 by 19 to conform...
Yeah.
You might lose a couple of spaces, but you've got more than enough spaces to begin with.
Still in compliance, you mean?
So, why do you need the extras, is my question.
Sir, councillor, you have...
Sure, as the letter said, and I think Mr. Scanlon or Nanette said last hearing, the intention is for the convenience of the tenants. We know it's a few more than what's required. But, it is, if you will, a kind of suburban site where people are really relying on the cars. And I don't think that it's a significant waiver in terms of going to 9 feet in width by 18 feet in length, which would allow the extra spaces, which I know different boards are, and different towns feel differently. But, in a site like this, it doesn't seem unreasonable to have the number of spaces that we're proposing.
Is the board, might as well, we go over it quick. The board, you okay with that waiver? Anybody against that waiver?
How many extra spaces are there?
Three.
Oh, there are three extra spaces.
Yeah. But, it's still two, but it still comes to, what, we have 16 in total? That's our total?
Yeah, I think so, it's a summer.
So, it's two, it's two per unit, which is not unusual.
I agree with them. I think it's a good idea to have the extra spaces myself, but...
Well, they're supposed to have 16, they have 19. Okay, so you're okay with the waiver? Okay, so let's go next one, Mr. Rowley.
Okay. I talked about the grading around the buildings. And it's, their response was the gradings have been revised on the plans, and sidewalk deal revised, sidewalk detail revised to show a maximum of 2% cross slope. So, that particular detail, I haven't really looked at a lot, but it looks like they are fine. I was concerned about access for handicap, which was set up for one building. There is a handicapped access ramp at the sidewalk, which leads directly to that building, so we're good there.
Yeah.
The next thing had to do with a driveway that goes between the existing house and the barn, which is being renovated. It has been widened to 12 feet, but it still requires a septic truck. If he's gonna go in to maintain the system in the back, he's gonna have to stop on Main Street and back in. Because if the three spaces that are back there, behind the existing building, are occupied, there's no place for him to turn around. So, that still is a concern. But, as I looked at the revised plan, it appears that if you were to reorient the septic system, which in effect would push it back, there would be the opportunity for preparing a turning spot for him to pull in directly, and to be able to back around and then drive straight out.
Like a little hammerhead, kinda?
Yes, and that would be beyond the three spaces that are already there. So, I recognize that they're squeezing the septic system in between some very large trees that are out there. But, it looks like there's room enough, if you do the orientation right, to maintain the trees, and at the same time, push it back so that there's room for that hammerhead that would give the driver operator a chance to get out safely.
Yeah, I think if that becomes a safety issue, I think you should consider that. Councillor, what do you think?
Rick, if you can come up and comment.
Is the board agrees with me before we go forward?
Yes.
Backing up on Main Street is not too healthy.
We don't have any objection to making that change, just adding, adding more pavement and a turnaround in the back. Could make the comment that one of these extra spaces that we're providing could be used for that type of vehicle at that point in time, since we have...
Well, you gotta...
Spaces for one unit here, and spaces here for this one. There's extra parking space there in the back.
But, you have to shape it as a hammerhead. You shape it as a parking lot, then three people park, there's no safety to turn.
I think it's better to add the hammerhead, but Rick, can you do, can you do, can you do that without moving the septic?
I mean, we can make the septic, instead of being this long, it can be a little bit wider, so we can move, you know...
Okay, okay.
Tranchers, something like that. Do that, I guess.
On that plan, I don't have a plan in front of me. I'm looking at the one on the board, on the easel. Is there a provision for a place for a dumpster?
No, we don't have one, no.
Could the hammerhead we're talking about serve as a place for a dumpster? I think you're gonna need one there, or not. Are they gonna have all individual roll-around trash barrels? Maybe you could kill two birds with one stone there?
Sure.
Let me, is 801 have dumpster, or each one bring their pride? I think each per, each--
801 or 815?
815.
815, we have dumpsters.
You have dumpsters. Yeah, I recommend, get rid of, you have an extra space, turn it to a hammerhead. 20 feet is plenty for a dumpster and a hammerhead. Does that sound right? Is that good, Charlie? Would that sound right?
Yes.
They may not even need to eliminate the space if they, like you said--
If they have the room.
Say yes, a little wider and a little shorter and still get it.
That makes sense, Rich?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Very rarely does the trash guy and the septic pumper come on the same moment.
Hopefully not.
All the boards in agreement, agreement with that idea?
Yes.
Yeah, anyone against it? Okay, so let's continue, Charlie.
Okay. I did take a look at the plan in terms of the finished floor elevations of the buildings relative to the sewer lines that are coming out of the building. It's gonna be very, very close. I assume that these buildings are gonna be with slab-on-grade construction. Would I be right in that?
Four-foot crosswalks.
Four-foot crosswalks, what, are they backfilled up to where they would simply be a poured slab?
Yeah.
And then whatever the flooring is would be laid on top of that?
It can be more, just so you can put the buildings on top of the foundation. So it's either four feet, the slab would be at the bottom there.
Is there gonna be a crawl space under the building?
Yes, yes.
Oh, there's a crawl space?
Yes.
That might even make it a little bit more of a concern. When I calculated the difference between the finished floor and the invert of the sewer pipes going out, it looked like it was very, very tight. Knowing where that plumbing goes inside, I would suggest that they take a look at it to be sure that there's enough difference in separation of height.
You mean the invert is pretty high or low?
Yes. Not knowing where the plumbing is on the inside, you need a quarter inch per foot pitch on the inside of the building. So you need to get to that point at the outside of the building to set the grade for the invert of the pipe. I'm just asking that you take a look at it to be sure that all of a sudden you're not squeezed and you don't have enough room between the finished floor--
Why, the water table is high, they have to go--
It's not water table concern, it's just the way they've set the grades a little bit high, I think. Just asking them to check it to be sure.
Put that leaching field lower.
So whatever they, whatever they figure out is a matter--
Yeah, we're putting the leaching field as low as we can. There's, Title V has a maximum depth. So that's where we started and then we backed, backed up all our inverts into the, you know, into the buildings. I think we're okay, but--
Well, apparently, if it doesn't flow, it's not gonna work. But just be careful, so you don't have, it's a good advice--
I'm not saying there is a concern.
Because your foundation addition of foot high?
Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, once we go to the Board of Health with our final design, we can make sure if we have to add a half a foot to the finished floors, you know, we can do that.
That would, that would be the thing, because it's from the point where the pipe exits the foundation, within the foundation, you need that clearance for whatever sewer lines and the traps and everything else that are in the inside of the building. Needs to be enough clearance for that to be placed.
If for some reason your kitchen and your bathroom is right there where the pipe invert is, you probably unlocked, but if it's the other side of the apartment or the house, you're gonna lose like eight, nine inches. But I guess if it doesn't flow, it won't work, right? All right, next one.
Okay. The word preliminary, I guess, has been removed from the plan, so we're not dealing with preliminary plans anymore.
Yeah.
16 monuments shown on the site plans, I'm all set with that. Basically, the things that were put in there for what I reviewed seem to be covered in fairly good shape, but I do have a couple of small comments with respect to the latest plan that I could share with you at this time, if I may. One thing is the lack of grading, or appears to be the lack of grading for that driveway that's between the existing barn to be converted and the existing dwelling.
Is the latest plan, September 1st plan that you showed, you mean?
This would be the, I guess so. This plan is the one that's dated June 30th, maybe even a later date than that.
No, there's a revision date to the left of that, I believe.
Revision date of--
I believe it's to the left of that date box.
Revision date of September 23rd, this is the latest plan.
September 23rd, I thought they were.
Came in just a few days ago.
What was that revised?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I submitted, the one--
23rd of September.
We'll hear it from you, Charlie, go ahead.
All right. The driveway that goes between the buildings, the existing three-bedroom house and the barn that's gonna be converted, has been widened to 12 feet. That would appear adequate, since most vehicles that would go in there are only eight feet wide, so you've got sufficient width. What I'm not seeing is sufficient detail to tell me what the grades are. There are numerous grades on the project plan that are sort of in the background, they're not faded, so I can't tell the difference between an existing grade and a proposed grade. My concern is, I wanna be sure that there's no runoff from the site that goes out into Main Street, because the existing grades right there are very flat. The second thing is, would be sure that there's no ponding within that driveway and the three parking spaces that are shown on the plan. So if they can just adjust that to show proposed grades and show this pitch and that we're not running runoff out into Main Street, that would be helpful.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I see that Main Street is 418, then it's 419, and it's 413 once you enter, 46, 40, and the proposed grade, I don't see.
It's not showing on the latest plan.
No. Rich, do you have an explanation for that?
Well, that, yeah. I mean, it's a, basically, it's a really, 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 really flat site, and--
But you can divert your water to Main Street.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's some of the, that portion of that driveway right now is discharging onto Main Street, but we can, we can create a, some pitch to this driveway, so it pitches all to the back, towards the right, I guess the northeast corner if we need to. And that'll still get us access into the buildings easily enough. You could show some grading lines there easily enough.
Okay.
Okay, is, I mean, I'm assuming, Charlie, if the, if the sidewalk is at 414, so you're looking at 39, at 414, you're looking at 48, 40.8, and it's 419, so that's a pretty good pitch.
Where are you looking, Mr. Jim?
Coming in from Main Street.
Yep.
Like the, the bitum is concrete, top of concrete, 419 and 414, the first-- BC and TC.
That's a, that's a six-inch difference in grade between the top of grade and the bottom of curve, that's typical.
Right. Okay, but if it's the top, if it's at 419, and then you gotta, I would assume the driveway is gonna pitch down, it'll be lower than, than 41, than, it'll be at 413, pretty much where the existing grade is, still lower than the 418 from the road. And you think? How much, how much you'd like to see between Main Street and coming in? How much pitch you'd like to see?
That's, that's gonna be exactly the same as what it's always been. What's happening is, once you get beyond the throat of the driveway to that first space, any runoff water that's coming in that direction is gonna turn in and flow toward the curbing that's at that first base, and it's gonna flow along that curbing until it gets all the way down to the end and goes into that catch basin.
Ah, I getcha.
So everything is pitching at that point from Main Street, it's going into the site. And then it's sort of, since the driveway is crowned in both directions, only half of the driveway entrance is gonna flow to the right into the new spaces, but that runoff will ultimately go to that new catch basin.
Okay, remedy. You have a remedy for it?
No, I don't think there's any issue with it.
Are you good?
Yeah.
So why are we discussing it?
I don't know why we were either.
You, you, you had concern about the water going to Main Street?
I'm not talking about that driveway, I'm talking about the driveway which is going between the existing barn and the old--
Oh, okay, so, all right, so let's go back to the other issue.
Okay.
So we don't have an issue there?
That, not, not going to the existing development, no, I don't.
Okay.
That we need to run the calculation to be sure that we're not overtaxing the rest of the development, because when you look at the drainage area plan for the drainage calculations that were done, it incorporates some of the roof drainage from those three buildings that are next to the new parking. So it's not just a little bit of paving we're talking about. There's a little bit more reason to expect that the 100-year storm may push a little bit of runoff in that direction. So we just need that calculation to be sure. But the one I'm worried about, not worried, but concerned about, is that the proposed 12-foot driveway that goes out toward the septic system, I'm not seeing any finished grades there, which will help me be comfortable that there's not gonna be any puddles, because right at the entrance, it's 41. But there's a brand-new contour right at the corner of the grides, it's also 41.
I see that.
So that's, that's very flat. So I need to know that there's gonna be some way to manage that runoff to carry it away from Main Street and not dump it out onto Main Street. And if it's graded flat, you're bound to have puddles, because you can't grade everything perfect. So it needs to have some pitch.
And they can't go towards the septic, it gets higher and higher. All right. Rich, gonna have to find a remedy for this one?
It's a minor thing, it may be just a matter of crowning it, so that the runoff goes more to the sides, in which case you could line the edges with some stone, a stone trench, and that would capture the runoff and it would be fine.
Okay. Some ripraps along the road, along the driveway?
Yeah.
A few ripraps?
Yeah.
Okay.
It may be a simple, simple fix. So that's the only issue on the plan that I really had, other than the, the making sure that the inverts of the sewer pipes are deep enough, that's all, the finished floors are high enough, whatever the case may be. Then the only other thing is, on the detailed plan, they have in the proposed paving, an inch and a half of binder course mix and then topped with an inch and a half of top. It would be preferable, and I, I don't remember, I'd have to go back into the subdivision rules and regulations, whether it's an inch and three-quarters and an inch and a quarter of top, that would be preferable to an inch and a half and an inch and a half. It just gives the base a little bit more thickness.
Okay.
And the other--
I'll do an inch and a half, but-- The regulation says inch and three-quarter.
Yeah. And the other thing would be that the nine-inch subbase that they have, that's adequate for reclaimed asphalt, but if it's simply gravel, the rules, the regulations say two six-inch layers, one on top of the other.
Okay.
So it's their choice. If they wanna use the DOT standard of the M103.1B, I think it is, then they need to increase that to 12 inches, or they can use the reclaimed and keep it at nine. The only other thing was, to be sure that there's a--
The reclaimed asphalt?
Excuse me?
The reclaimed asphalt?
Yes.
You know, I found these things, they, over time, they dip.
If they're not compacted, anything will dip. It all, it all depends on compaction and how well it's graded and put down. The only other thing on the detailed plan was, make sure that there's a ring of cement concrete around the collar of the catch basin frames and sewer grates that seals that up. So between the riser and the collar, there needs to be a 12-by-12 collar. And I can put that all in writing, so that--
Yeah, I recommend some number five steel to be cut and anchored to, if a plow hits it or so on during the binder, it won't move it.
Well, that cement concrete will really seal it up, but we need to put that in as a detail, so--
I know, with the binder, if the binder's in there and somebody hit it hard, it'll move that collar.
Oh, no question.
If they anchor it with some number five, it'll be fine, like six inches. You could add on your detail if they wish to do--
The concrete, the 12 inches of concrete going around it really does seal it, but I'm assuming that when they do those parking spaces, that they'll put the basin, put the catch basin in, and put the binder in, raise the catch basin frame so that it's up to finished grade, and then run the mix right to it. It does, in this particular case, it makes no sense to put the binder in, wait for six months, and then put the top on. It might as well all be done at one time. It's no game. So small.
Okay. I'll do half inch, don't go flush, it's gonna settle.
The driveway between the buildings, there's no structures anyway, so we don't have to worry.
Okay. All right, what else? That's good?
That was it.
Board member, any questions? Board member? Nothing? Wanna close it up?
We could.
Yeah, well--
I mean, we like you.
I mean, I would be, I, I, if you're okay with it, because the conditions are fairly specific, and Rick, I don't hear anything from you, I think we can agree that conditions to make all those changes, because there's a normal condition to submit the final, more detailed plans anyway. So we would, if you agree, we would like to close the hearing and, you know--
If we, I, I'm not comfortable giving, personally, I'm not comfortable giving yes without everything in hand. I could close the public hearing. I would suggest to close the public hearing, if you wanna close it. And once we have everything in hand, and next hearing's October 12th, only a couple of weeks, we could vote yes or no.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and that's, that's fine. The only thing, thinking out loud, is, just in case, I mean, even to have a response from Mr. Rowley on the record or any--
He's pretty quick.
No, 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 but I mean, technically, the hearing would have to be open to do that. So I think I'm okay with keeping the hearing open, so that the submission can be made prior to then, any review, and it might be very, as you just said, Mr. Jim, a very brief, limited discussion. And I won't be here that night, so probably be quite brief without me.
So we need to continue, we don't wanna close the public portion.
Right.
So can we have--
Make a motion to continue.
Are you guys okay with continuing, everyone? Okay, anyone on the public, against or in favor? I hear none, so let's get a motion to continue, 25 dash 22.
I just moved to continue to October 12th.
Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
My second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. So we see on the 12th.
Question, if I could do it, is it helpful, and I should look to Mr. Buckland as well, but is it helpful, without being presumptuous, that I do a draft decision even if, you know, it's more--
Very good idea.
Yeah, is that okay? Okay, great.
Exactly what we talked about.
Each time you save us work, you can be presumptuous.
That's fine, that's why I get the, the jobs, I can do it. I can do, thank you.
So we run the draft by Mr. Rowley as well?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, for the conditions, yeah.
You don't mind, CC him?
Absolutely, that's fine.
Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 12th. Okay, those amigos continued. 27 dash 22, Carlton White. 17 was Central F. So White, they had to go out of his way, and we bring him back. I see you have all kinds of plans this time.
Yes, yes.
Great.
So I thought I would start with, plus you have your own thoughts, I--
Yes. So whatever you have, just pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The top of it is a face from view, and what I did is took from the architectural plan, some images of what, of what the, you know, how that, the future would compare to what is currently there. And that was all in the, for me and for my wife, in the spirit of keeping with the character of the current house and the neighborhood, but gaining, gaining some space in the, in the, so those were the photographs.
Okay. And the site, can I have a copy of the site plan, do you have one here?
Right here. I have some site plans.
Yeah, good idea. For FAR to be in there. I asked FAR to be there, yeah, thank you. Good, thank you. All right. Last time, Troy, Rich, Randy, Jim, and Veronica. Okay, so let's start by Troy, do you recall this project, Troy?
I do.
Okay, so you have any question on that?
I do not.
Rich, do you have a question?
No questions at this time, I'm trying to go through and absorb what we have delivered.
17 years central.
Veronica?
Nothing, no.
Jimmy?
Thank you for the pitches.
Yeah, thanks.
Jake, you have any question? Although you can vote on it, but you could have any question. So I believe it's a good project myself, I'm in favor of it, whatever the board feel like it, feel like to do. On the public, anyone against or in favor? This project, I see none. So who, who thought about it and who looked and--
I like the, I like the project.
He likes the project.
Get out of the way.
Veronica?
I, I like the project, I--
I-
You don't like FAR?
Correct. I don't like the FAR, but I think the applicant was willing to make a permanent deed change to say that this was going to remain a single-family home and not become a two-family, so that satisfies my concerns.
Okay.
I'm agreeable to that, yep.
Okay, we'll have to draft that.
Deed restriction?
Yeah, and it's gonna be recorded with the decision.
Do we want, do we, yeah, Patty?
Patty, on that decision, if it's granted, we need to insert the deed restriction, that property could never be a two-family, to remain single-family.
Ken, can you help us with that?
Yes, I can.
Okay, can too, so you know the comment.
So can we, can we vote tonight and, and have that added?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be a condition.
It'll be one of the conditions.
As a condition, okay.
All right, if you guys okay with this and no comments, let's move to close.
So moved.
So I have a motion to close this portion of the public hearing, which is 27 dash 22, Mr. White Jr. Do I have a second or not motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, abstain. Again, this one, Jake is not voting on this, so now what's the wishes?
Make a motion to approve and grant the variance as requested, subject to the deed restriction that will be drafted and added to the decision.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jim to grant the variance of one percent, an additional 1% on building coverage, an additional 1% on impervious space, surface, and addition, and also on FAR in existing 21-8 to 41.3. And based on the plans dated by Outback Engineering, 9/27/2022. Those being this condition, do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
How many people are voting? Four, five?
Five, not Jake. So again, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, 5-0-0. Very good, you got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project, you and your wife and your family.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. 28, is there someone to sign, or we have to go to-
No, we, we gotta do them, for some, whatever reason, we've been, we've been not getting with the little flags to sign. I think they're writing them up and giving us, giving it a chance to get written before we sign it.
Okay.
We'll either, either you or I can sign it and get it to the clerk's office, and then we can have a copy at the next meeting to circulate the signature.
Okay, very well.
Unless everybody goes in on their own.
Did you go sign that thing today or yesterday? She wanted your signature.
On?
On Keaton, for the denial?
Geez, I don't know, I, no, I did send her, I would have gone over.
I did, I think one signature's enough.
It was filed already, it was filed.
That's fine?
That was fine, yeah.
Okay.
You got it.
You guys remember, in Corona, we voted that one person can sign, if you guys recall. Okay, we're gonna go to 28 dash 22, Wareham PV1 LLC on Zero Route 25, and that's the solar project. Okay, ma'am, public hearing still open, just state, you name an address for the record. Let's hear it.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Eba, 101 Walnut Street from VHB, here on behalf of the applicant. We do have Betsy Mason and Lindsay Kester on Zoom as well, those, they could be promoted.
Okay, so where'd we leave it last time and what, what we do?
So let me, I have a couple graphics, and I can just hand them out to you, so it's a little bit easier to see.
Yeah, that looks better. This way you could see it good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I know last time we were reviewing sort of the constraints and the hardships for this site specifically, mostly about the layout of the site itself and the, the topography. So Betsy, if you want to review the graphics I've passed out, we have the current proposal, the original proposal, which was submitted last year in August, and then the last figure is showing the constraints with the 50-foot buffer as outlined in the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
Sure, if, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, name an address and let us know.
Yes, Betsy Mason from Cavens Royal Group, 420 Boylston Street in Boston, Massachusetts, here for Wareham PV1 LLC. I will cut to the chase this time as opposed to last time. Believe we've already established that there are unique circumstances relating to the shape of this parcel. It's a very strangely shaped, long, narrow parcel, and we were discussing the question of substantial hardship. And here, I think it's fairly clear to see that the substantial hardship arises directly out of the unusual shape of the property. And I'm gonna show, if I can share my screen. Perhaps not, yes. Okay. Is the site layout comparison showing? On the screen? I ask only because I can only see myself. All right. Basically here, the hardship arises directly out of the unusual shape of the property. If the parcel were sort of more uniformly shaped, there's sort of a standard-shaped rectangle, if you had a, at a 22.4-acre parcel as we have here, that were shaped in a more typical fashion, it could accommodate up to 926 solar panels, even with access drive and an appropriately-sized stormwater basin, and that is even with the imposition of the 50-foot setback requirements from which we're seeking a variance here. So you could have, you could fit 926 panels on your 22.4-acre parcel and still accommodate the 50-foot setbacks if we had a more typically shaped parcel. However, we don't. We have this odd skinny parcel, oh, and I see, okay, it's, I'm not sharing my screen, so I apologize. The, as you can see, if we have, if we take our 22.4-acre parcel, not our theoretical, typically shaped, nice rectangular parcel, because of the parcel's unusual shape, it can actually accommodate only 532 panels, as well as an access drive and an appropriately-sized stormwater basin, if the 50-foot setbacks from what we're, what we're seeking the variance were required. So that's a difference of 43%. If we had a, in short, if we had a sort of a standard-shaped parcel, we could accommodate 926 or so panels, and here, because of our parcel's unusual shape, the same acreage, 22.4 acres, would only get 532. So, you know, you're losing 43% of fewer panels solely because of the strange shape of the parcel. That said, we also touched on the third criterion for granting a variance, and that is, you know, would it be causing a substantial detriment to the public good or derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaws, and in particular, the bylaw provisions that we're looking for variance from. Here, those provisions, those 50-foot setback requirements are, their purpose is clearly to protect residential abutters to a parcel on which a large ground mounted solar facility is being constructed. In, in our instance here, there are no residential abutters, so you're protecting against an issue that doesn't actually exist. We're obviously border on Route 25 to the south, town land to the west, including the municipal maintenance facility, woodlands to the north, and primarily cranberry bogs to the east. No, no residential abutters, so the, the imposition of these 50-foot setback requirements that apply to properties adjacent to residential districts or residential development or across the street from residential development simply aren't necessary here because we don't have any residential abutters. So if, if this board were to grant a variance from them, it, it would, it, it wouldn't cause great public harm because imposition of the requirements wouldn't be solving a public problem in the first place, so.
Thank you. Okay, as we talked last time, apparently I am in favor of this project, other people on the board is against, which I understand. But let me read a quick, quick thing from the zoning act on chapter 40A about variance. The permit granting authority shall have the power to grant a variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw where such granting, where such granting authorities specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition and shape, very important, soil condition and shape or topography, which we have here, of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district which is, it is, which it is located. A literal, a literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance or the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petition or, or appealing, or appealing, or appealing. So now keep in mind, we do understand the developer will make money regardless, but it's a, it's a, we're in a capitalism system, so you could make, you can't tell somebody while you're making some money, you shouldn't make anymore. Another thing I thought last time, and I drove by, Mr. Sample has concern of the deer jumping, I would say it's even better now, there's two fences, because there's already a fence on the highway, there'll be another fence. And I think it's the right location, much better than other projects in town for solar. It's away from everybody, and it does meet the criteria, it does meet the statute requirement of a variance. This is my opinion was last time, it's still this time, I'm gonna pass it by the board. We start by Troy.
I don't have any questions right now.
Veronica.
I thought about the project since the last meeting, and I, I'm not opposed to changing the setback in some of the locations, looking at what you have here. Now, I don't necessarily agree with, but I am willing to consider some changes to the setback.
The way it's presented, or where you don't like it? Which side you don't like?
Well, well, let me just say that, so every parcel has a setback, and the reason for the buffer isn't strictly for residential property protection, it's for property protection in general. The 50-foot, I would say, is for the residential piece of that. But there's a 20-foot buffer that's required of every property, for the most part, that's commercial, and I'm not willing to, to necessarily go less than that.
Sure. So if you're looking, just to make sure you're looking at the compromise proposal, the first sheet, the title in the bottom left, I just want to make sure you're looking at the most current plan.
Yes.
Okay, so the, there are two locations where it does vary less than 20 feet. So the top left, the westernmost property line, again, abutting the town maintenance lot, we're providing a 10-foot setback of vegetation. Over to the right, which is north of the site, which has been, again, previously cleared, and has some of the other constraints that we discussed with the topography, that has a minimum of 15 feet setback. So those are the two locations where we are providing less than 20 feet when abutting the, the town lot.
I'm a little confused because there's a variance to the setback. It's 15 to 45, it's 10 to 100, it's not specific, so.
Actually, if I may?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you very much. Here, in, in this setting before this board, we're asking for a, a variance from the 50-foot setback all the way around. But what, we, we would certainly agree to a condition in any, any variance granted, that this, this compromise proposal, that's a proposal that we have put before the planning board in our site plan review application process, and essentially we've committed to, committed to, to those setbacks as, and I think, Sarah, you've got the 50-foot setback figure still up on the board, but the, our original proposal took very, I won't say, I guess, aggressive positions on setbacks based on, I want to say, section 10 of the bylaw. We had some 10-foot front yard and 20-foot side rear yard. Over the course of several meetings with the planning board, planning board indicated that it was not happy with those setbacks and wanted to see the 50-foot setbacks, and we pointed out that we don't have residential abutters and that the 50-foot setback requirements for solar facilities pertain solely to if you abut residential parcel or are across the street for residential development. And since we don't have residential abutters, we, we came up with this compromise proposal where we, we agreed to bigger, basically bigger setbacks than we had originally proposed, but recognizing that the planning board wanted to see something more in the way of buffering, for example, along Route 25, and along the, you know, the boundaries with the municipal maintenance facility. And some Wareham residents not abutters also voiced some concerns, as did Mr. Rowley. So we came up with this compromise proposal, and essentially, that's, you know, we're, so to cut to the chase, we're not proposing no setbacks, we just don't believe that the 50-foot setbacks apply, but more importantly, that a variance from them is fully warranted on the three variance criteria, so.
Now, keep in mind, whatever there's setback, that's not to the panel, there's additional 15, 20 feet to the panel, so whenever they say 25, you gotta add another, some places 20, 25, the road, so you're looking over 50. And keep in mind that, that bylaw is fairly new and hasn't been discussed or challenged yet or modified, and I don't think it's fair the way that bylaw's written.
I think the 50 feet is, is primarily intentioned to be a visual screen, and I think what the applicant is saying is that we don't need a visual screen of 50 feet in the areas that they're proposing less.
Yes, correct. And, and in fact, yes, we are proposing to add vegetated buffers in those areas, just as a, as a, you know, as a, an olive branch, if you will, to the, to the planning board and to those residents who didn't like what we had originally proposed. And in addition, and I think Sarah touched on this last time, but along the western boundary on the northern half of the property, we've got an issue not only of the odd property shape, but also topography there. The land actually dips down by some decent number of feet, so there's a, there's a slope there that makes, that, that- there that makes, that further blocks visuals from, certainly from Charge Pond Road, you know, looking through all the trees, but even if somebody were standing, you know, in the middle of the woods on the town property there, again, there's, that visual buffer isn't needed along there either for that reason.
Yeah, Richard? Richard, comment?
What's that?
You comment.
I have no comments.
Nothing?
Nope.
Jake? All right, going to the public, anyone in favor of this project? None? Against? Name and address for the record, please.
Barry Cosgrove, Black Mopon.
Yeah.
West Wareham. Good evening.
Evening.
Last time I was here, I was speaking on behalf of 15 citizens. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of 25 citizens, and all of us begin by sincerely thanking you for your, for your service to our town. We're not here to debate energy policy, solar versus fossil fuel versus wind. We're not here to debate whether the solar bylaws are good bylaw or bad bylaw. We're here to present legal precedent to assist you in your obligation to decide this matter based on the solar bylaw we have, whether we may wish that bylaw were different or otherwise. We assert that this variance request fails to satisfy all of the compulsory elements required by the law. And the law in Massachusetts for 65 years for variances has been very consistent. It's only in rare instances and under exceptional circumstances that relaxations of the general restrictions established by the statute should be permitted. It's for tests. It's not shape.
Sir, may I stop you?
Please.
Granting a variance is a sole discretion of the zoning board. I don't appreciate you teaching us what's the four statute requirement of a variance. We know what they are, and it's our sole discretion, each member, to say yes or no. So personally, I don't need you to tell me what's the requirements are, I know exactly what they are, and I just read them for you.
Yes, sir, you did. But the courts have interpreted them very differently than what you've said, and you positively have.
But if that's the matter, if the board choose to say yes, then you have to challenge this to a judge. I'm not a judge.
I understand that, and our hope is that by giving a little bit of input on how courts have looked at these things, when well-meaning boards like yourself have exercised discretion, what have courts done with those decisions of discretion? And let's start with shape. According to the highest court in Massachusetts, relying only on unique shape of a lot is legally flawed. Quote, "This consideration standing alone is irrelevant. The fact that the location has a special shape cannot alone support the granting of a variance from setback requirements." And where the hardship is solely due to the failure of the project developer to design a project that fits within the shape, that kind of hardship does not justify the granting of the variance. That's a Supreme Court case, Massachusetts, 1993, and the defendant was the Wareham Board of Appeals. Now, certainly not you guys, that's 30 years ago, we were all one years old at the time. But it's important to point out that in that case, the weird shape interfered with the setback. Here, there is no such situation. The odd lot, as it's described, is not a non-conforming lot. The shape doesn't make it non-conforming. It's not an impediment to building a substantial solar project. In point of fact, if you look right next door, and I have here some photographs, if you look right next door, there's four other solar facilities. Three of them have very, very odd funky shapes, some of them with very, very, very narrow sections, some of them, in fact, only 23 feet wide. They figured a way to do it without a variance, played by the rules. The problem here is not shape, it's the applicant's own doing. Here's what their application says. "The project is impossible to build as planned." Not impossible to build because of the shape, as the plan they wanted it to be. They started off tonight with saying, "If, if only the shape were bigger or more uniform." Well, if I could skate better, I would have been Bobby Orr. That's not a legal standard to say, "if only." Construction of a large-scale facility on this site could be accomplished without one solar panel invading the setback. The problem is, they're trying to cram too many panels into this site. You could take any location, the perfect square or rectangle they dreamed for, you put too many panels in there, and you overcrowd it. You take a canoe with an odd shape, it's supposed to hold six, you put the New England Patriots' offensive line in there, it's going to sink. You're going to blame it on the shape of the canoe? The variance request here is nothing more than a plea for more panels, not relief from a genuine shape problem that relates in and of itself to the project. Substantial hardship. The applicant isn't seeking a variance to escape a dimensional problem, so they can add a carport, for example, that only needs a couple of feet of relief. They've got 22 acres to work with. That's over a million square feet to work with. They're seeking a massive variance. If you do the math, they keep changing what the setback they want here near, but if you do the math, you're talking about a setback of an acre or more relief. The term the applicant repeatedly uses, economically impractical. The trouble is, the SEC, SJC, has repeatedly ruled that economic impractability and reduced potential economic gain does not constitute substantial hardship. If you look at page eight, section two of their application, they lay out nothing but economic woes. And to go quickly, I won't repeat them, but the first one is, look, it won't be financially practical if we gotta abide by the rules. That exact claim was brought in a case called Delgado versus Board of Appeals of Bedford. The claim of economic infeasibility was denied. The body was reversed. Then they go on to say that if they can't do this, then the landlord they were going to have is going to not get the revenue he was hoping. That exact case has been heard not once by twice. It's Planning Board of Barnstable versus Barnstable Board of Appeals, and the City Council of Walthing versus Venceuta. Diminished profits, personal financial hardship, irrelevant. The bodies who issued a variance on that were reversed. They go on to say, they're going to experience substantial hardship because they've spent a bunch of money on this already. Tons of cases. Brusie versus Board of Appeals of Hingham. Raya versus Board of Appeals of North Reading. Prior expenditures, not a legitimate basis for claiming substantial hardship. And think about this. The applicant chose this site, they've been at this for months, they just now figured out that it's not going to have the financial return they were hoping for? Their poor financial planning is not the duty of the ZBA to fix. They go on to say, that if they can't get the variance, they maybe not sell power generated to the facility. Well, that case has been decided. Delgado versus Board of Appeals of Bedford. The zoning board gave the variance because the, because the claim was, well, if we don't get the variance, we can't build more public housing, and we need public housing. And the court said, no. So it's, then they say, of course, you know, if we can't put it in, we're gonna, we're not going to save the world from climate change. Well, it's highly speculative that 600 solar panels are going to change the world from climate change. What may be less speculative is the tons of trees that have already been removed and are proposed to be removed furthermore. Finally, they also said that if they don't get this variance, few lower taxes will be paid to Wareham. That case has been decided three times. Kirkwood versus Board of Appeals of Rockford. Gordon versus Board of Appeals of Lee. And the Brusie case, again, not a legitimate basis for determined hardship. There's no rational substandard hardship here, other than the fact they got 22 acres, they picked the spot, and they want to have the ability to put in anything more than what really should fit. There's no different, if somebody came in here and said, hey, look, I'd like to build 10 houses, but I can't fit them in, so I want to build a 60-story building, and of course, the height restriction is 36 feet or whatever, you'd say you're out of your mind. How is this any different? I want to build more so I can make more. That is not a substantial hardship under the law. And again, look right next door. They have squeezed panels in in very odd shapes and made it work, and according to the planning department, some of the people involved in that project are involved in this project, so they already, obviously figured out how to do it. Derogation of the bylaws, a third standard. Now, remember, they gotta pass each one. The R30 district has a non-residential use setback at 20 feet, but it was changed to 50, two and a half times. And a rear side setback of 10 feet, changed to 50, it's changed by five times. So how can it possibly be the conclusion that you have a law that says we want to massively increase the setback for reasons having way beyond just residential neighbors? And that'll be addressed. And give, you know, 22 acres, the perimeter of 22 acres of relief, how is it not undermining the intent of the bylaw? The projects next door did it without any variances. Finally, detriment of the public good is a fourth standard, and the wildlife comments that were made last time, I can't make them any better. The deforestation that's going on there, it matters. The glare, our distinguished engineer, as I understand from the record, was very effective in terms of arguing that this being too close to 25 was a glare problem for the other projects, so they didn't get the variance right next door, which is being asked for here. How can you apply the rules of one project right next door differently to another project? That's not in the public good. And finally, I'll repeat it. What does it say about our town, our standards? If we reward a site, which is presently the subject of two ongoing investigations for violations of other Wareham bylaws, to get this break, how in the world does that further public good? These comments are on behalf of Barry Cosgrove, Ingrid Valdez, I have all their paperwork here, Allison Stewart, Jeanne Lennon, Mike Lennon, Mr. and Mrs. George Ekman, Pibony Cortez, Karine Laura, Mary Harahan, Paul Horahan, Jay and Carol Conley, Annie Parks, Rick Park, Annie Hayes, excuse me, Rick Park, Janet Murphy, Sandy Lewis, Joanne Racine, Bob and Beth Malone, Eric Lintala, John and Maureen Murphy, and Chuck Purdy. And I'll just close again. I never dreamed in my life I would come through a zoning board of appeals where someone would say, as the basis for a variance, it would cover a primitive 22 acres, if only we had a different lot. That is not a legal standard that will hold up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Now, are you on the board of the solar bylaw? Where are you?
No, no, sir. No.
With all the respect to the board, based on the new bylaw, there's only one more parcel, the Graziano property, you could do solar, and the whole town of Wareham. So it's a very.
Well, you're talking about a solar bylaw that's not in place, correct?
And it's poorly, and it's biased, that's my personal opinion. It's biased, and it has a personal agenda. That's my opinion, and I disagree with it.
Are you talking about, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And this one, this project, I know you talk about all these variances, but each project has its own merit. I believe, I strongly believe, the hardship stands here on the shape of the slot. That's my comment. I go back, I, who, are you all done, sir?
I just wanted to say, sir, just for the record, when you, when you make your point about not thinking that bylaws are great bylaw, are you talking about the one that's existing? Are you talking about the one that's still at the attorney general's office and hasn't been decided upon?
The existing one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak against? Sir, ma'am, ladies first, go ahead, sir.
Eric Lintala, 15 Squirrel Island Road. I think my, my worry is these other solar fields that are on the table and being built. I've seen them, they've abided by the setbacks with acres of woods, two on three sides, no houses, no butters. What's to stop them from coming and asking for the same, the same request? I, to me, it's, it's simple, they've created a very large project on a very small amount of land, and they want a variance for that. Scale down the project so it fits. They're pushing the limit here, and if you're going to pass this, I'm afraid what other companies are going to do when they come in here, then?
Well, this, this is, this was my comment from before. This gentleman, this gentleman doing this project is getting penalized because the Ferring Hill project, and I know you guys all live by that project, and you worry about variance, that if, it's not before us to discuss, and it's still an open public hearing with the planning board, we're not going to discuss it.
I'm not discussing.
I believe this gentleman here getting penalized for that project. And apparently, all of you live next to the other project.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
You have, you have the right to make a comment.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking as an outside observer on this project.
Right, I mean, you, you're asking us what would happen if another project, we don't know, because there's no other project.
Well, you should know. If you're going to give this, allow this variance, you know, they're proposing something that doesn't fit, and you're saying, okay, there's some woods here, there's no butters, it's okay. I think you're setting a bad example, then, if you're going to allow, I know you have an opinion, and a lot of other people have opinions.
So it's, my opinion's based on the shape. All the board members have different opinion, believe me, there's, believe me, there's a lot more people, more than you think, against it on the board. But I'm saying, given my opinion, and you're going to hear the rest of the opinion of the board.
All right. But, but you understand, they're proposing a project that doesn't fit, why don't they scale it down, then? Or it's in the wrong place?
I totally understand, when it comes before us, we worry about it. We can't, I mean, you're asking us something, and.
No, I don't think I'm asking a difficult question, I think it's pretty simple and straightforward.
So let me ask you a question. You would like.
As a point of order.
Yes.
Sitting on the board here, I believe that we're encouraging a debate, and I think that the person at the microphone should have the right to make his comments without debate.
Okay.
Well, I've said, I've said what I need to, it's in your hands.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to step by.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. So, ma'am?
We'll get somebody on Zoom that wants to speak too.
Lady, not the lady first.
I'd like to pass out what I'm going to say to the board members.
Go ahead.
And I'm sorry, but she told you.
Sure.
Thank you.
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 Annie Hayes, 52 Farmers Lane. I have a, a different way of addressing the detriment of the public good. At your last meeting, I mentioned my concern being more than visual for the drastic request from a 50 to 10-foot buffer for this odd-shaped project in a residential district. Often, visual is the main focus of a project to hide the utility so the, a butter's impact is negligible. An essential role of a photovoltaic site plan is to have a buffer zone more for the protection of land and water. These are the critical environmental elements needing protection from any pot, potential leachate of the many panels themselves, their synthetic chemicals, toxic metals, lead ribbons, PFAS-coated waters, and all other components that must endure up to 30 years of earth's increasingly severe and diverse weather conditions. In the case of 025, the odd shape lies atop the Plymouth Soul Source aquifer that is a rare and easily polluted water source needing protection from all relevant communities collectively and individually, project by project. Buffer protection is our job. No exceptions for skinny projects. Given that there are indications that work on this land has already intruded into the aquifer, it is safe to assume the panels will be very close to that water body. Only a few feet of highly permeable sand will buffer the aquifer from which we drink. Regarding buffers, is it logical that a 50-foot buffer on land is required horizontally, never mind a 10-foot buffer, and vertically, a mere four-foot buffer to protect toxic leachate from our only water source, the aquifer, is all that's necessary? My concern is for the chemistry of hundreds to thousands of solar panels we are told to trust won't be released into our land and water. Designated buffers are designed to protect water bodies and neighboring lands from dangerous runoff and leachate that could pollute and extensively damage for long periods of time and at great cost to attempt to remediate while the water is unusable. And there are so many examples that are coming up from toxic PFAS damage, PFAS's that can't even be measured, never mind the difficulty of remediation. We were blind to PFAS chemicals as the manufacturers wished, and we are stunned by the harm they have done, residing both within our blood, and they do, and arctic melt. They are global. It isn't feasible to discuss a site plan unless the panels' make and model are determined and the materials used investigated. In the course of 30 years of total vulnerability to the increasing extreme of weather, panels must not be susceptible, for example, to degradation from hail, humidity, heat and cold sealant penetration, UV cracking and bubbling, and weak back sheet, back sheet and air sheet degradation. After a decade of service for many of these panels, research labs and photovoltaic analysts and scientists are finding that models are leaching, heavy metals and PFAS polymers migrating as nanoparticle and being absorbed by soil and soil creatures as well as water. Inverter shutdowns and loss of power follow moisture intrusion. Current lab tests expose panels to much longer terms than the prior state-regulated one-day, 24-hour tests that have been used to measure toxic leachate under both simulated and real weather conditions. First Solar is the proponent's brand of choice for now. That's what was said last meeting. First Solar panels are a thin-film technology with two glass sheets around the cadmium telluride solar collector's mechanics. The company states their use of cadmium telluride is non-hazardous, highly stable, and non-soluble, thus safe, even though cadmium, quote, "and its compounds are highly toxic, known to cause cancer and target the body's cardiovascular, renal, gastrointestinal, neurological, reproductive, and respiratory systems." Now, these are URLs that you can't look at because when I printed this up, I was forgetting. If someone would give me your emails, if you would like, I would be happy to send this electronically so you can just click on the scientific...
Links.
Links, thank you. Thank you, hyperlinks that I've sent. There are many. These are three that are very specific to cadmium telluride, but there are many about leachate and the back sheet failure, et cetera. And then the bottom three are what are our recent ones from the 2020, 2021, '22, about these tiny quantum dots. They're tiny particles of the cadmium telluride. And it's not meat analysis. I don't know what I meant to write there. Meta, meta, meta-analysis, that second one of the little ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment, if it's so detrimental, maybe a bylaw should be presented to the town, put it in the warrant and ban it and houses and everything if it's that bad.
You're right, you're absolutely right.
Maybe the whole country should ban them.
Well, that's what we're working on. AG Healy is suing companies, and the whole nation is. It's a huge issue.
Thank you.
Before you sit down, ma'am?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. You've handed us this, I'm assuming you want this in the file.
Please.
But your name is not on it, or your address. Could I confirm it's Ann Hayes?
Annie Hayes.
And A-N-N-I-E?
Yes, 52 Farmers.
52?
And I'll make sure that you have that on the electronic copy.
That's West Wareham, correct?
Yes.
I just want to put your name, you know, this...
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Signed documents carry more weight than anonymous ones.
Online, who would like to speak? Zoom, whoever's on, who'd like to speak?
You got two people on Zoom.
Hello? Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Mary Horahan. I'm at 10 Carmichael Way in West Wareham. And I'm speaking in opposition to this because I have concerns about the integrity and the reliability of a developer who would purchase a lot, you know, that's oddly shaped by their own admission, plan to put 532 panels on it, and then at this point in the game, come back and want to increase this project by 40%. To me, it just seems dishonest and disrespectful to the citizens of Wareham to do something like that and to be putting you guys in the position of having to make this decision. They made the decision to buy this odd-shaped parcel and to plan this project, and that's the way it should go down. I mean, everyone else has to comply, you know, with the rules. And it just, it doesn't seem honest to me. And I, I, I object to the developer on that, on that level.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Who else?
Yes, hello?
Does that get recorded when that's, does that get onto the recording?
I'm pretty sure.
Bob?
If it goes through the speakers, it's recorded.
If it goes through the speaker, it goes on, okay. I just want, when they do the notes, if...
Next person, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, hello, can you, can anybody hear me?
If you speak a little louder, it'd be better.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, name and address.
Yes, my name is George Ekman. I'm at 64 Blackmore Pond Circle. And I'm really concerned with the long-term impact that these solar projects have on Wareham and what it will mean for my children and grandchildren. And I love to take my grandchildren on hikes. We go on trails through the old growth forests in Fearing Hill. In fact, the last time we were there, we came across a box turtle, which is considered a species of special concern in Massachusetts due to loss of habitat. So destroying these important green spaces to make way for ugly rules of solar panels doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I already have my fill of solar panels every time I drive up and down Toby Road. And if that kind of set off is supposed to shield people from the visual pollution that happens, it didn't do a very good job. Now, I realize that this petition is not for the Fearing Hill site, but I'm concerned that granting this variance will set a very dangerous precedent that will carry forward to any future projects and will encourage even more solar panels to, to be built. And I just don't see a good reason to grant a variance to an ordinance that is already more than reasonable. Now, as long as I can remember, Wareham has been known as the gateway to Cape Cod. But if we continue to encourage more and more projects like this to locate here, it's my fear that in the future, instead of being known as the gateway to Cape Cod, Wareham will become known as the gateway to the barren wasteland of solar panels. So I strongly urge you to vote against this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
Excuse me, if I could, could we respond to the, the previous person on Zoom? Or before the next person? Betsy, if you wanted to clarify?
Quick, please, counselor.
You're muted, Betsy.
My apologies. I just wanted to make sure the board and residents in attendance understood that the developer here did not come into this parcel thinking that the 50-foot setback requirements applied. In fact, it's still our view that these requirements don't apply. The planning board disagrees with that, and we and the planning, we and the planning board agreed together that we would come to the zoning board for a variance so that we wouldn't have to fight out that disagreement.
So, so you're telling me when he applied the 50, did not apply?
It's our view that the way the 50-foot setback requirements are written, they don't apply here because there's no residents abutting our parcel. And it's, it, I don't want to get into, you know, the, the, the language of it and parse through it because that won't be quick. But, but if Mr. Buckland is on the line, if, you know, perhaps he can agree that we, we came into developing project plans here having read the bylaw to not impose the 50-foot setback requirement based on the location of the parcel and its distance from residential properties. So...
I do agree. It's, like I said, it's fairly new bylaw. It needs a lot of tweaking. Who else, sir, online?
I have, I have a question of the applicant. Is, in fact, this parcel purchased or leased? And is the developer committed to it? Or is this a, an agreement that is subject to approval by this board and the planning board?
Excuse me, we have not purchased the parcel. I believe we have an option to lease the parcel, you know, assuming we can get all necessary permits. In terms of whether we're committed to this parcel, yes, we're committed to this parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please. What's that?
That, you got anybody else with their hand raised?
Yeah, I have, I got them in.
Yes, sir.
There you go. You're on.
So if, I, I, this is Allison Stewart. I live at 45 Blackmore Pond Circle. And I just wanted to say that I'm not in favor of any more solar projects in the Wareham, especially the West Wareham area. I have seen the area go from what was my dream home to solar projects everywhere. The unfortunate shape of this property is not the fault of the population. Most of us bought our homes and our property wanting to live in the country where we had deer and wild turkey and snapping turtles and box turtles and osprey and cranberry bogs everywhere so that we could enjoy nature. And all of a sudden, we have solar panels everywhere. And the poor animals have nowhere to go. And purchasing that property is not the, the fault of the population. I'm sorry that they made a poor choice in their, their purchase, but that's their fault, not mine. The rest of us that live out here want to live where there is, is wildlife and enjoy that. I don't want them to cut down the trees and put in solar panels and then put a facade up around it so that I can pretend that I don't see it when I drive past Target every time. You know, that makes me crazy. So the property doesn't meet the setbacks. From what I understand, everything that I've read, it doesn't meet the setbacks. It doesn't meet the standard of hardship. And I don't understand why we're even following this. Giving them any extra space only provides other projects to start moving in closer and closer and closer. And pretty soon, this is going to be, I'm going to be sitting in the middle of Boston only with solar panels around me, and there are not going to be any trees. It's, I am totally in opposition of this. I'm disappointed in the Wareham group that would even consider changing something like this. I hope that you really, really do some soul searching before you agree to make this change. That's all I have to say. I thank you very much for your time. And I hope that you listen to what the citizens are really asking for. We bought our properties here so that we could live in the beauty of Wareham. And I think if we keep letting things in like this, it, it's the wrong move. So please listen to what your citizens are asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Hi, am I being heard?
Yep, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Lemon, and I'm at 93 Blackmore Pond Circle in West Wareham. And I agree with the sentiments of all who have spoken previously about, you know, not supporting the variance as proposed. It does seem that the applicant has, is making an effort to try to cram more solar panels in than really do fit. And my feeling is that the more panels we put in, the more stress we put on Wareham's, you know, Wareham's natural resources. And specifically, I'm concerned about deforestation and the, the impact that it will have on Wareham's wildlife and displacement of all the animals. And, and I'm concerned about, as the previous person just stated, I'm concerned about Wareham's, you know, the beauty of Wareham itself. And for those reasons, I'm, I'm opposed to the, the proposed variance. And I hope that, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak about this. And I, like the previous speaker, would appreciate, I hope that we will be remembered when a decision is being made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else?
That's it.
All right, let's run the game by the board. Troy, what do you think of all that?
I'm not sure what to think of all that. I, I understand what we're all saying about the setbacks and no residential properties being there. For that reason, I don't really have as much concern, but I do have concern for other projects down the road if we're setting a precedent.
Okay, Veronica?
I think the opposition, the opposition makes a very strong case. They reminded me of a lot of the things that were said at the last meeting that I may have not really contemplated quite as much since the, the previous meeting. And with what they've said, I, I actually have to agree. They have a very strong case. The speakers that have come before us made their point well, in my mind.
Jim? I continue to like the location and like the variance, but I can't ignore the comments that I've heard. And I can't help but thinking that this applicant is between a rock and a hard place because if one speaker comes here with 30 signatures and eight or 10 other people stand up and speak, they merely need to unite and chip in $500 or $600 or $1,000 apiece, appeal a positive decision, and tie this thing up in, in court to a point where it's not even worth the applicant's time. So just saying that for the benefit of the applicant to consider. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm one that tends to think that solar panels have merit. I hear the comments about leaking. I feel as though I'd much rather have a 21-acre array that's monitored professionally than 21 houses that have unmonitored solar panels on the roofs. But I'm also a huge advocate of homeownership, you know, individual ownership and rooftop mounts. So I'm, I'm really, I'm between the devil and the deep blue sea. I don't think I'd be comfortable voting either in, in favor or against this evening.
Okay, back to me. I wish there was one person from the neighborhood. Unfortunately, everyone from the Fearing Hill area. And that's why I think it's very unfair. I still stand by my decision. I think it meets the statute of requirement. Jake? Rich?
I believe I said everything on the last meeting, and I'm going to stand with my decision.
That being said, ma'am, you want to say, say anything before we close?
I think we, sorry about that. I think as, on behalf of the applicant, we covered everything, but I'll defer to Betsy and Lindsay if they want to. everything, but I'll defer to Betsy and Lindsay if they wanna add anything.
Counselor, you wanna add anything?
At this point, I would ask that the board continue this matter to its next hearing.
Well, let's see if the board wishes to do that or close. What's the wishes of the board?
I'd like to know the basis of the continuance.
Let me, let me listen to Charlie, Mr. Rowley, quick. Go ahead, Charlie.
That's okay. If you want to find out the basis for it, I have no problem, but I just had a couple of comments, that's all.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I just was wondering, the, the reason for the continuance, is it for, for the applicant to reconsider their setbacks? Or is it just they need time to think about this and how they wanna proceed? Or, I'd just like to know the basis of the request for a continuance because it seems this has been discussed and redisgussed. And the only thing continuing at this point is doing is kicking the can further down the road.
I agree.
Well, I, I think we are looking for an opportunity to come back to the board to address some of the comments that have been made this evening. Beyond that, we are not going to reconsider our request for variance. We, we, in the first instance, don't think these requirements apply because of the location of the property in relation to other residential properties. That is, there are none abutting this property. That the 50-foot setback requirements in the zoning, in the solar portion of zoning bylaw pertains specifically to impacts on abutting residential properties, of which there are none here. I am sympathetic to many of the concerns that residents raised regarding box turtles and those sorts of things, but those comments are really the, the bailiwick of the planning board and the site plan review discussion, not the zoning board and this variance discussion. And I would say, in, in closing, just that there is no nullification of these 50-foot setback requirements because here, they don't serve a purpose for this specific project on this specific parcel. They don't serve a purpose. They will not provide the visual buffers that they're intended to provide. It doesn't have anything to do with some of the other interests that some of the speakers described. This, the incredible significance of the sole source aquifer notwithstanding. But that's not an issue in this proceeding. And the last thing, very important, and I know you board members know this, but no precedent is being set here. This is a single application for a variance for a single project on a single parcel. As you, Mr. Chair, said yourself, the board has discretion here, as it has with every project and every request that comes before it. And each one is unique. Each one has to be decided on its own facts. And it is not gonna be opening the floodgates for future or current solar projects to all of a sudden be requesting variances from various things, site-specific, limited in impact to this property. That said, we'd still like a continuance if the board is so inclined.
I mean, I'll entertain a motion if the board agrees.
Still wanna hear from Charlie?
Oh, sorry, Charlie.
Just a couple of comments from me, Mr. Chairman. One statement that the previous speaker said, I believe, is inaccurate. To say that there are no residences or, or properties that are occupied by residential uses this now is, doesn't matter. Because Section 594.1.3 says, and if I may be allowed to quote it...
Go ahead.
"Front yard depth shall be in accordance with Article 6 of the zoning bylaw, provided, however, that where the lot abuts or is across the street from a residential district or residential development, the front yard setback for all structures, including fencing, vegetated buffer, shall not be less than 50 feet." So, the fact that there are no residences that abut this property doesn't matter. It's in a residential district. Not only does it abut the residential district, it's in a residential district. The fact that the town owns the property that's next to it along its westerly property bound, they could sell that tomorrow and a residential developer would go in there by right. Putting this in with reduced setbacks, in my opinion, and this part of it is just opinion because it's not in the bylaw, that it puts the abutters at a distinct disadvantage. Because if they were to come in, even though this project were to come in first, and there was a less than 50-foot setback, they would be then looking at a setback that was less than was required if they were there to begin with. That having been said, I would just say to the board that if you remember, and Jim specifically, you remember the site visit that we did to a project which is next to this...
We sure do.
...in which we went out and the argument was made that the vegetation, which is within the layout of Route 25, does not start at the, does not clear cut all the way to the boundary. There is vegetation there. So, to assume that it would be okay to clear more than 50 feet next to that boundary, especially where the bylaw says that if you're across the street from a residential development, it shall be 50 feet, that the state would have a right to go in and clear that vegetation right off to the lot line of the layout if they chose, that would leave the boundary along Route 25 virtually meaningless, in which you would see the bulk of this project because that's where the bulk of the solar panels would be. So, I only point out that just because there's no residents there at the time, it says it's residential district or residential development. It's in a residential district, whether you like it or not. It, it says abuts it. Well, the property certainly abuts the boundary of property that's in a residential district. So, I don't know how you can ignore that. So, I just point that out. I'm, the only thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is that you've made a decision on an abutting property to manage that 50-foot buffer. We went out there and we actually made sure that they weren't clearing trees beyond a 40-foot distance so that the heavy vegetation and the subvegetation, which is below the trees, were to be kept there. They weren't supposed to pull the stumps, as a matter of fact. They were supposed to leave all that there. So, it would come up, and if the state decided to widen the highway and, and do away with all of their buffer, you'd still have a buffer. The fact that this is next door to it, why shouldn't that be the same if you're gonna be consistent? So, that's my reading of the bylaw and also a personal opinion as to how I see the bylaw.
But you recall, Mr. Rowley, as well, that time we agreed to 50-foot buffer, it wasn't even a bylaw.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't. He didn't ask for a variance.
Yes, it was. It was a part of the bylaw. Because you're dealing with a bylaw which was in effect at the time that those were developed, which is exactly the same as what these people are under.
When that project came in, there was no bylaw for the solar.
Yes, there was.
Oh, well, that is irrelevant anyway to this case. All right. The, the applicant liked to continue. Anybody like to make a motion to continue?
So moved.
Jake, you can't vote on that. Do I have a second on that?
To continue.
Second.
Okay, second by Troy. All in favor to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Deny.
Deny.
Aye.
Three. It does carry to continue. Okay, we'll see you next time. Whatever evidence you have, bring to us.
What was that vote, three?
Three, two, one. Three, two, zero.
Three, two, zero.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. So, continue till October 12, okay? And, yes. Okay. Public hearing 31-22, Ellen Thompson and Heidi Hampson.
Anything from this last one that wants to go in the folder? If you guys wanna take that handout home, you're more than welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Don't you feel like you were lucky to hear all that before you got heard?
I appreciate the opportunity to gain so much education on a Wednesday evening.
Why is it for the experience, exactly?
I feel blessed. Blessed to be here, blessed to be on the planet.
Blessed. 31-22. To you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Have a good night.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your comments tonight, Charlie.
This has to be read in, doesn't it?
Yes.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 28, 2022 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 31-22 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 620, Article 13, Section 1352, and Section 1353 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Ellen Thompson and Heidi Hampson, Care of Lockwood Architects of Lonset, Mass., proposing to construct a 76-square-foot, one-story addition off the left side of the existing dwelling located at 2 Bush Street, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Wareham Assessors' map 3A-5, Lot 9, in the R43 zoning district.
All right, Mr. Lockwood, name and address.
Good evening. Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, 219 Lonset Avenue, representing the petitioners. As has been stated, we would like to construct a small addition of about 76 square feet on the northeast corner of, of the existing structure to provide a bathroom for, to connect to existing bedroom. In your packet, you have a site plan prepared by Raymond Engineering, or GF Engineering, and also a floor plan and elevations prepared by my office. We are, although the reason for our being here is we're, parts of this will be constructed within the setbacks, although we will not be creating any further encroachment on either the front or the side setbacks. And we will, the addition will still fall below the threshold for the FAR. So, for those reasons, I think a special permit would be warranted and hope to look favorably on it and look forward to answering any questions you might have about the project.
All right, very good. So, apparently, this is an existing non-conforming. Adding a bath, a bathroom or the proposed addition will increase the nonconformity if the board feels fit on the 1352. We could act upon it after a special permit. If not, it will be a variance. Start by Troy. What do you think, Troy?
I don't think, I mean, you get an existing office over there already. I don't really think it makes, I don't think it's adding too much to it. I don't see a problem with it.
Veronica?
I'm fine with it.
Jim?
The only thing I, I noticed on a quick look is that they're losing, it looks like they're losing the ability to park a vehicle off-street. Is that correct or incorrect of some kind?
It changes their ability to park it off-street.
Affects it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, the shell parking area is gonna remain. It's just gonna be...
It'll probably be reconfigured, frankly, or...
Yeah, in the picture, I see a Jeep parked on top of the shelves, but I also see grass between the street and the...
Right. Yeah, and if we, so they'll, they'll be able to block, park vehicles there one way or another.
Okay. That's my only question. I don't have, I don't have a big problem with this.
Jake?
No, this is okay.
Rich?
I'm sorry. I just didn't have a chance to look at it because I go on the projects, on the Wareham thing, and it wasn't on there to, to check out. So, I'm sorry that I'm not up to date on this because I wasn't aware of it.
Okay. If you're uncomfortable, we can...
I don't have any questions at this time.
If you're uncomfortable, we can continue. If you wanna go drive by.
I'm just, I'm just curious why it wasn't on, in the projects, but it made our agenda, that's all.
It is. It is, Rich, right here.
Point of order.
If you, if you go to the zoning board of appeals and look on the projects, it stops at 3022. 3122 is not on our thing. So, I'm just telling you that it wasn't there until I was handed tonight.
Interesting.
So, I did not have the ability to look ahead before this meeting.
Yeah, I didn't have the opportunity to look at it before this meeting. I don't really think there was a debate. It's just, I'm just stating the fact that it wasn't on the projects in the town website.
Okay.
And that's, and you depend on that. That's how, that's how you base your preliminary information. You do all your research and advance on the meeting off of that. I do believe that that's what we were told, that all our projects would be online. So, it wasn't, so...
Good thinking, actually. Okay. That being said, before we go further, anyone on the public or on Zoom wanna speak in favor or against? I hear none. I guess that being said, I recommend that we continue this project. It looks good to everyone. I have Mr. Rich, Mr. Sample, go look at it.
I'm just... Excuse me, sir. I did not say that. I wasn't comfortable with it. I just, I just was apologizing. I, it wasn't on, but I just didn't understand why it made the agenda when it wasn't in the project list on the website. That's my observation.
Oh, okay. So, you comfortable to go forward? Or do you, what do you wanna do?
From what I just looked at, it seems like not an issue.
Okay, that's good. Even better.
Okay.
So, before we go forward, so anybody wanna add anything? Okay. You wanna add anything?
No.
I make a motion that we close the public portion of this hearing.
Did we have public comment?
Pardon me? Yeah, you already asked.
Oh.
You got nobody, right? Nobody on Zoom?
I got three people, but nobody raised their hand, so...
Oh, they probably would just watch.
Last call on Zoom. If anybody wants to speak, get your, click on your hand or... If I don't hear anything, we're, we're good. We're good. I make a motion that we close the public portion of this hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. We closed.
As usual, Mr. Lockwood puts a pretty comprehensive, complete package together and helps us make our decisions. A little more information than we get from some. I'd like to make a motion to, to consider that this is not detrimental to the neighborhood and it could be treated as a special permit.
Okay, do I have a second on Jim's motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. So, it's a special permit. Now the wishes.
So, unless somebody else wants to do it, I'll make a motion that we grant relief Article 6, Section 620, Article 13, Section 1352, and Article 13, Section 1353, and find favorably for this applicant.
Any discussion on that, other than the findings, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood? And as presented, of course.
As presented.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. It carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It was worth the wait. It was worth the wait. Why is it a pleasure?
May I ask, have you, any other discussion?
Since we're, since we're closed, just an informational question.
Yeah.
Are you now a six-member board?
We've always been six.
We are a seven-member board, five voting members and two alternates. five voting members and two alternates. We're still looking for an additional alternate.
You want to come?
If you want to.
Join us.
The reason why it seems.
I join you often enough.
The reason why it seems like we're doing it, he's, can vote on certain ones tonight and certain ones he can't. So that's where our associate is helping out. Excellent.
And yeah, and he's asked enough big time. Mr. Morrison? Last few times.
So don't take off, if you don't mind. If you're in a hurry to get home, but.
Yeah. All right. Any other businesses, any discussion you guys would like to do?
I just, I don't know if this holds any weight, but we constantly continue, continue, continue. And we're making more work for ourselves every time we continue. I'd like to see if we can work through a lot of this sometimes and move these hearings along. Because, I mean.
Yeah, you're right, but.
I mean, I understand it's due process, but I'm just saying, I think that there's sometimes that maybe we might be able to, certain ones just not keep kicking the can down the road as we just did.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. It's just.
I understand.
We donate our time and we were here very late last week and we create, we're creating a workload for ourselves. So I was just, I was wondering if there was any chance that we could lighten our load sometimes. That's all I'm saying.
Everybody has suggestions. Please do. But that's the definition of a volunteer.
No, I.
When you volunteer.
I agree. He's got a point.
Makes you a good point.
It is. But sometimes, I mean, I mean, there's two of them, three of them tonight that requested continuance.
I just want to remind you all.